Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for October 7th, 2024. We have three study items on our, on our agenda for tonight. Item number one is contractor licensing, proposed updates. Item number two is the legacy Lutheran campus zoning requirements. And item number three is the 2024 budget updates. We will start our meeting as we do most of our meetings with comments from members of the public to address the council. You'll have three minutes to address the council. And when I call your name, if you are here, please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name. Tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. And you'll have three minutes to address the council. And our apologies, our timing lights have gone out, but the county, but the city clerk, and I will try to keep a, keep a time going. And we will let you know when your time is getting ready to expire. So our first speaker is going to be Christine Disney and Janelle Shaver on deck. I beg your pardon?
Margie's.
Margie's gonna do it, yeah.
Hi, my name's Christine Disney, and I do live in Wheat Ridge. I do not work because I'm lazy. No, I retire. I have lived in Wheat Ridge for 27 years, and I have the great good fortune to own a coveted 1950s-era brick ranch house. Like many longtime residents, I have a lot of equity due to high housing prices. And I am sure, like many residents over 65, someday I will want a smaller property and no mortgage. Right now, even with my equity, I could not afford to buy a home in Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge is my home, and I don't want to leave. So yeah, call me selfish. Having a variety of housing, as envisioned in the Lutheran campus master plan, will ensure that I and other seniors will have a better chance of finding desirable housing, i.e. one-floor living. Five-story buildings would offer a tremendous opportunity for senior rentals. If there's more opportunities for a variety of housing, there's going to be more children to attend Wilmore Davis Grade School. Ever since the closing of that school, many families have moved into the hood, but that's still not enough children. A variety of housing will afford families a chance to live here. More families plus more kids equal open schools. And finally, an inconvenient truth. If we don't raise the limit on height, we lose the chance for affordable housing. The people who work in Wheat Ridge, teachers, cops, firemen, service workers, et cetera, cannot afford to buy a home where they work. Salaries have not kept up with housing costs, and we are 40,000 units short in Jefferson County alone. For those wanting nothing but single-family homes on the campus, one formula for building projects is to net out around four times the land value. For illustration purposes, assuming a lot costs $300,000, which is low, then the project could be around 1.2 million. Building a 1,700-square-foot house at $500 a square foot comes to 850,000 for the house alone, plus you have the sewer and water hookup costs, which are probably around $20,000. So we've almost reached 1.2 million. The mortgage for a $1.2-million house, assuming 20% down, which is $200,000, and a 6% interest rate, comes to around $6,000 a month before taxes and insurance. That is out of reach for most people.
You have 30 seconds left.
These amounts come from the internet, a builder, and a realtor who works with new builds. The one-third acre lot with the brick houses is a product of the 20th century. 21st-century realities are quite different. Land and water is finite and expensive. People want walkable, bikeable development with coffee shops, restaurants, and open space. Not everyone wants to live in a single-family home. They want vibrant neighborhoods, not a sea of houses that look the same. And we have a once-in-a-lifetime chance to build something truly unique. Let's raise the height.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janelle Shaver and Tamara Phalen on deck.
Hi, Margie. Is this on? Okay. I was really surprised at the memo when I read it, the pack-up memo. The whole, it seems like the whole tone of the memo is spin. And it's, it's written to make the citizens in existing neighborhoods think that you're really sticking to the letter of the law, and you're gonna stick up for them. And in reality, what it is, is just giving any future development basically whatever they want, a huge menu. The reason there aren't 600 people here is because people don't think that they have a chance, that this is all cut and dried, that the council will rubber-stamp everything that the staff puts out for them, and you won't change anything. First of all, my issues are, these are some. The blue house, the chapel, and the patient cabin, you should demand that that be preserved historically, not, well, you tell us how you're gonna preserve it. You should demand that it be preserved. ADUs shouldn't be in allowed use. ADUs are for bigger properties where they wanna use some of the land to help pay for the existing. These are already gonna be really little, really little lots, so it's not appropriate. 21 units per acre, I think each sub-district should follow the charter for that use. The low density should be single-family only. The neighborhood is almost all single-family zoning. The 30-foot setback on the outer ring, does that include the open space? Just exactly how deep is the open space going to be? If it's 15-foot, then that, and that's the setback, that's not open space. 15 feet is nothing. That's not open space. The on-street parking on Dudley, access to Dudley, and, and no open space along Dudley? This is not what was, has been presented to citizens for the last year and a half. And driveway access to Dudley. There should be more than 10-foot separation between townhomes. The side internal setbacks include five feet plus five feet of landscaping. That's not enough room to include grass, bushes, and a sidewalk. You should require pitched roofs because that's compatible with the existing area.
Excuse me, you have 15 seconds.
Okay. I have one more thing. The difference, indifference to the Lutheran Hospital legacy, the, I think, it's my opinion that the lower portion, the northern portion of the property should be required to use blonde brick. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Phalen and Mary Ann Stork on deck.
Hello, my name is Tamara Phalen. I live at 4205 Dover Street in Wheat Ridge. I've lived here for 30 years. I'm here to talk about ballot question 2C. I think most residents of Wheat Ridge are aware of the ballot initiatives, and the city has been talking about what to do with the Lutheran Hospital property since 2021 or 2022, including many surveys, community meetings, open houses, and outreach. They developed a master plan, and in 2C, they're asking us to approve changes to height restrictions in the city charter for that specific property. My concern is that you get a lot of information before the election. I didn't see anything. It would be in the Blue Book, but there was nothing in the Jefferson County Clerk's pamphlet about this particular issue. And I am concerned that there isn't, like, an analysis to and from. I was directed to the city website today, and in order to get the full information about this, you would go to the city website, the tab Your City, Elections, 2024 Election, and then you can take a look at 2C. So most of us are pretty familiar with it, but I do urge everyone, all Wheat Ridge citizens, to scroll past the overview of 2C and the wording of the ballot question on the, on the city's webpage, and to read the actual text of the amendment, which, again, amends our city charter. Even if you support the zoning change, please pay attention to the last sentence of Section H. After talking about Lutheran, which we've all known about and is in the ballot question, the final sentence says this, and I quote, "This shall not modify any current zoning on any property and shall preserve existing height and density limitations in the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws unless and until modified through future ordinances approved by City Council after public hearings." Unless and until modified through future ordinances approved by City Council. It sounds like that could be a loophole, and that could mean City Council could change height and density limitations without requiring a vote of the citizens. 2C amends our charter and includes that sentence. I hope I'm wrong about this being a loophole, but I do urge all citizens of Wheat Ridge to read and consider the impact of that ballot question, whether you are for or against those measures. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Stork, and, okay. Then our next speaker will be Dorothy Archer and Paul Shaver on deck.
Do you need the name, address? Dorothy Archer. 3640 Marshall Street. Wheat Ridge. I basically, well, hello to you, I haven't seen for a long, long time. I'm back. A few things, I won't repeat what the young lady before said, because I feel 100% the same as she does. No 2B and C. It's left too wide open. There's two question marks. There's too much leniency. There's not enough input from the citizens. Not fair. I'm not for density. I am for three or four stories, nothing higher. We don't need to compete with Denver. We don't strive to take care of the whole homeless situation. And Wheat Ridge is huge. I understand we have facilities on 44th and Wadsworth that are going to address a lot of that situation. I would well imagine when the rest of the vacant lots that have torn down an awful lot of our houses on 38th Avenue will address maybe some of that situation also. I do at this time want to ask City Council, when that property becomes available in Lutheran complex, why doesn't the city approach building a new city offices? You deserve it, and Wheat Ridge deserves it. Paying rent for other facilities to house some of the departments, to me, doesn't make sense. Where will you ever find that large a piece of property to which is vitally needed in Wheat Ridge? I know you have to approach a contractor who's gonna purchase it. I don't know all the details on how that works. I know nothing about it. I just want to say, I would even be in favor of a one-cent increase in taxes if you would build a new city complex on that property for yourselves. Lots of property there. There's room then for some apartment complexes, maybe even some duplexes, maybe even some individual homes, maybe even a little retail.
Excuse me, you have 15 seconds.
Thank you. I'm more in favor and more explicit in my voice about the city offices. Please give that deep consideration. That way, this whole complex could be given to the police department. Hopefully, you can do that. I'm not in favor of high density and packing it in. I never was, as you well know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Shaver. Okay, thank you. We have several people that have signed up to join us online, and our first online speaker is Dan Kassica. If you would please unmute yourself and introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Mayor, it looks like he, Mr. Kassica might have just jumped off. He was there, but I think he's gone.
Okay. Then our next speaker that has signed up online that I'd like to invite to speak with us is Mr. Zach Ward. If you would please unmute yourself and introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Mr. Ward, I've given you permission to speak on this end. If you can just unmute.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach. I am at 3585 Allison Court, here with my partner Riley. We are definitely against the, the tall building mandate, and would like to also repeat that part of 2CH, I believe it was, that leaves too much open. So we're definitely cautious of that and need to be. Sorry, just reading through this again. I think the best thing for this, for us in this community, honestly, is to have residential, nothing that is going to increase the, nothing that is going to increase the population or the density here too drastically, but also just living spaces and, and walking spaces and green spaces and bars and restaurants, things that will build this community, things that will raise the property values of all the residents that are already here. Yeah, I think that, that's mostly what we have to say. I think that a lot of the residents here would agree with that. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker joining us online is Kathy Milkie.
Mayor, I don't see Ms. Milkie online.
Okay. And so she's not with us right now. And did Mr. Don Kassica show back up?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then that is all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. Thank you all very much for, for coming and talking to, to council tonight. With that, we will go to agenda item number one. This is on contractor licensing. Mr. Goff, do you have an introduction on this item?
I would just like to introduce Lauren Mikulak and Maria DeAndrea. They're going to present this item this evening.
Okay. Director Mikulak and Director DeAndrea. Continue.
Thank you. We're here to talk about our parallel permitting and licensing systems. We also have our chief building official, Renee Mario, on the line if we've got any very technical questions. I think you probably know that for decades, we've had sort of a parallel process. If you are doing work on private property, you obtain a building permit or contractor license through the building division. If you're doing work in the right-of-way, applicants go through Public Works to obtain a right-of-way permit or municipal contractor's license. Both of those two pathways have historically used ADG. That's our current permitting system. And both will be switching over next year to our new permit and licensing system, Open Gov. As we've been working the last couple of months on the backend doing setup, we went to enter our current licensing scheme and fees. And when you actively do that, you realize it's, there's room for improvement. So there's two things that could probably be improved on both sides, both right-of-way licensing and building permits and licensing. The licensing types are a little more complicated than they need to be, and the fees need to be updated and removed from the code. So just briefly, on the building division side, we have 15 different license categories in the code. That's more than most communities. We're proposing to reduce that down to eight. We're not changing our general contractor licenses or our big three, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. It's those other specialty contractors that could be simplified into two classifications, untested and tested. The International Code Council, the same group that produces the international building codes, they publish tests for contractors of different types. So there are some specialty trades that are tested, like roofers, and, I'm forgetting who else now, fire suppression. And then we have a wider range of untested trades, drywall, windows, signs. So our approach to simplify these sort of specialty trades is more aligned with our peer communities. Modifying our fees would also be more aligned with our peer communities. We are a little lower than the median when we looked at our neighbors. We're proposing to modify the fees by about $25 to $50. On the building contractor license side, that's an annual fee paid on a rolling basis when you either come in for a building permit or if you have an active building permit. And then lastly, we're recommending that those fees be removed from the code. The fees actually haven't changed in 20 to 25 years, probably because they needed to be changed in both the code and in the fee schedule. We're proposing those fees just live in the annual fee schedule that council reviews with the annual budget. Right-of-way licenses have the same sort of fundamental issues, but they're slightly different. So I'll turn it over to Maria.
Yeah, thanks, Lauren. Very similarly, staff is recommending that we go from four current classes of licensure for work in the right-of-way to two. One would be, and to simplify the process, one would be as if you're excavating in the ground or in the pavement, that would be one license. If you're not, in just occupying the right-of-way, that'd be the second licensing category. So really simplifying that, we, similarly, we would want to remove the fees from the code language and make those a part of the annual budget process. And then kind of the next step we want to take is go back and really look through the code, modify that to increase some of the requirements associated with contractors. And when they do dig in the pavement or even in just a grass or right-of-way, making sure that there's requirements in there to come back and restore that. Right now, we're seeing a lot of situations where they're filling back in the holes, but they're sinking, they're not up to, to par, and they're probably not going wide enough or, or deep enough to make that repair so that the street is in as holy a condition as possible after they make that cut. So you'll be seeing that probably late this year, early next, to kind of reinforce what we're doing and make the, some of those requirements a little bit clearer. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay. We will open it up to questions from council. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the memo. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say that I'm supportive of clarifying and reducing the numbers of licenses we have because some of them are repetitive and unnecessary. Well, I guess I do have one question, though. And I did see that if you need to be, if you have to have testing for your license, so that would be general contractor, electricals through the state, plummings through the state, but then there's mechanical, we accept testing from other municipalities. So I'm assuming that's Denver, Aurora, and Boulder, probably?
Yes, there's a handful. Those are the big ones. So if a contractor has already proven their ISCC test score to another municipality, then we, we sort of have reciprocity with those jurisdictions.
Great. Well, I am in, in full support of moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. One question I, I had was, as far as the fees, does this, how does this pencil out? Is this pretty much like the same? You know, like, are we thinking that, you know, within one year, that the amount of fees add up to what the fees were previously? Is it pretty close? Or are we gonna be in deficit? If we're in deficit, then are we considering raising those fees?
Oh, I see what you mean. By simplifying the fee classifications, what's the net impact on revenue?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. The, I, I think our, if we weren't changing the fee amounts and we're just changing the classifications, I think it would be sort of net neutral on the building division side. We're proposing to increase the fees slightly, so even with the classification, I think we'll end up a little bit ahead.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions from council of our two directors? Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is just kind of a dumb question. In the, in the original chart on general and tested specialty, mechanical contractors are basically people that are doing heating and ductwork and ventilation and evaporative cooling. About regular cooling, air conditioning systems, is that a different class of people?
That, it's a good catch. Air conditioning should be in that category. I paraphrased the lengthier description of that and omitted the very common and better-known.
You know, a swamp cooler versus a AC unit?
Yes.
There's a big difference.
Yes, air conditioning falls under a mechanical license. Thank you.
Well, I took my question. Thank you very much, Councilor.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was, everything that I've read in here seems to make, make a lot of senses, and, and the timing would seem to be just about right with this new system coming out.
Okay. I had a question, perhaps for you. Do we require sidewalk bonds or other public improvement bonds when, when contractors either do their work on a particular project, or I'm more familiar with them having, sort of posting an annual bond?
Yes.
That would guarantee their performance.
Yes, so whether you're doing, if you're
Yes. So, um, whether you're doing, if you're doing work for the city, for each project, we require both a payment bond and a performance bond. And then, uh, for this example, where people are doing projects for other entities or the, the, uh, public, they are required to get, uh, post a bond with their licensure and we keep that on track as well as insurance documentation so that if the problem arises, we can go back and contact them and, um, seek remedies if needed.
Has that been a reasonably effective tool to, to guarantee the quality of work that we're looking for?
I think it could be. We have not exercised that right to a great degree. Um, I think that's part of this rewrite is trying to up the requirements, do communication with all the contractors and then know that, and remind them that that, um, ability is there if the city needs to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any additional questions or discussion on this item? I don't see any, or we're looking for consensus to move, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, Councilor Holtein, you snuck up, uh, you snuck up behind my screen here. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a little bit to your question, is there any type of circumstance where we would not actually issue a license? Is there anything, um, you know, if there's like recurring complaints or if they're non-performing on their bonds? Um, is there any type of like evaluation or review on the license? Or are they basically like just automatically given if somebody has the, uh, requirements that are, are needed for them?
Um, we have not turned down licensures or license applications. Uh, again, uh, we're planning to do more communication with our community of contractors and, um, probably do a little bit more in depth on that. But yes, if they can provide the bonding and necessary insurance, typically they are approved for, uh, another year of licensure.
Okay. Uh, well, I was glad to hear that, uh, you are looking into more guidance and direction. Um, just as someone who is in the public right of way a lot on foot or on my bike, um, I can really tell the difference between, uh, in the public right of way contractors who are, uh, cleaning up, uh, their work site back up to standards that were preexisting and not. So I'm glad to hear that that's something that you have on your list. Uh, and other than that, I'm very supportive of simplifying this, cleaning it up and making it easier to do business in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Do we, uh, do we have consensus to move this forward in accordance with the memo? It looks like we do. Thank you all very much. Does that, uh, cover all of the issues that we needed to?
Yes, thank you.
With that, we will go to agenda item number two. This is the Lutheran Legacy Campus zoning requirements. Mr. Goff?
Thank you. Ms. Mikulak is, um, preparing here with Scott Cutler as well to, uh, I believe answer questions, but I'll turn over Lauren.
Okay. Director Mikulak.
All right. Thank you. Um, Scott and I are here on the theme of the zoning regulations for the Lutheran Legacy Campus. Um, tonight, you know, J D Wallace, I just want to give a reminder for us. Um, tonight I'm going to share where we are in the process. Um, we'll talk about how the new, the state really is organized. Um, and that may also be a few examples of the things that we're looking for tonight. So we're looking for tonight, we all, if you can, you can use Lauren.
Oh, gosh, sorry. Thank you. Um, I was just summarizing the agenda slide. Uh, what we're looking for tonight is a green line to, green light to finalize the zoning regulations that we've been working on, um, based on the content that we're presenting and also in alignment with the master plan. So the recent activity, this is for viewing audience, this is not sort of the four-year timeline. That is available on whatsupwheatridge.com. Um, but for the purpose of tonight, we're really focusing only on what's occurred this year specifically to advance the zoning regulations. So in April, we met and discussed the pros and cons of the city taking proactive action to implement the master plan. That included discussion of charter amendment, uh, re, uh, code writing and a legislative zone change to convert the plan into reality. Um, in April, we actually recommended writing a custom zone district, and that's what we're presenting tonight. Um, we talked about that approach at a pretty high level in July, and we've got a lot more specificity on numbers and regulations. We've also had a series of public meetings this summer, three let's talk meetings where we had a big Lutheran presence. We've had a study session with Planning Commission. We're having another one in November. Um, and we've had Lutheran, um, content shared at a variety of other types of public meetings. And then in September, we sent a postcard. It was about 1,700 addresses. That's all owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the property. And we had a two-week comment period specifically on the zoning. Um, and we actually got a lot of really insightful comments submitted through that process. So I do feel confident that we have a set of really specific regulations that uphold the intent and detail of the community's vision. And that's what I'd love to walk through tonight. So as a reminder, um, it's zoning regulations that implement planning visions. So zoning is the rules that translate the master plan into the built environment that the community wants to see. Zoning, as you know, I like to say, it answers two questions. What can you do with your property and what can it look like? And those can be really simple answers when it comes to a residential garage or long and complex and multifaceted set of regulations when it comes to property like Lutheran. Um, so what we're doing in this case is we're creating a new section in the zoning code. It's Article 14. And we are writing a new zone district. We have four existing mixed-use code districts. We are writing mixed-use Lutheran Legacy Campus, M U L L C. Um, we are using those existing mixed-use regulations as a basis. So some of this will look familiar for something like an applicability section or architecture where there wasn't, um, specificity in the master plan. We are relying on the codes that we have and use, and that seem to be working well in Wheat Ridge. Um, but many, many of the regulations are highly customized to align with the master plan and really reflect that central trade-off. You've seen this text and this image before. The central trade-off of the master plan was to ensure that the perimeter of the site is a buffer between the existing campus and neighborhoods. Um, the regulations should ensure that existing assets are integrated. That's ditch, that's existing buildings, that's even tree canopy. Um, and the interior is afforded more flexibility. So what we want to do tonight, um, instead of going through the memo, which is organized as an ordinance with those very sort of specific headings, applicability and parking and, and building design, it's hard to envision or imagine what the, the ultimate outcome of all of those regulations are. So instead of following the order of the memo or the ordinance, um, what we'll do is take it by topic area. Um, the last image I want to speak to is this zo, oh, I didn't advance the slides. Shoot. Um, the last image I want to speak to, which was in the master plan, is this zone map. That's confusing when you talk about zone districts. So for the purpose of the ordinance, we'll be calling these sub-districts. Um, but you'll see us speak to these different sub-districts because there will be different rules that apply in different areas of the campus, appropriately so, because we want to achieve different outcomes in those different areas. So the first topic we will jump into is open space. And Scott and I are just going to go back and forth on some of these big topics.
Thanks, Lauren. Mic is on. All right. Um, so we're taking a regional approach to open space with an emphasis on publicly accessible spaces. The master plan really had a lot of great information and guidance for us on how to craft zoning regulations. Um, but what it didn't include was an actual percentage. So we've landed on a 20% of the net site development area dedicated exclusively to publicly accessible open space. Uh, net means excluding streets and excluding right of way. This is all of the developable land. 20% will have to be publicly accessible open space. That would includes, uh, things like plazas, parks, play areas, walking paths and natural areas with native landscapes. Publicly accessible means open to the public regardless of land ownership. So it could be owned by the city or it could be owned by a, a private owner with a public access easement or a metro district or HOA. And then additionally, on top of that, 20% private open space will also need to be provided, um, for each building. Um, so for example, for an apartment building, they might have some private amenity spaces like a dog run or a pool. Streetscape landscaping will be included throughout, parking lot landscaping, and then for all of the single unit homes and duplexes, actual private yard space. Additionally, uh, we are requiring publicly accessible open space to be placed on Dudley Street with connections into the site. Um, we're actually, in, in the memo, talking through, um, some design parameters for that, but that will be a requirement that is written in the code that was important to the community and in the master plan as well. And then continuing on open space, um, thinking about stormwater from a regional basis. So sometimes you'll see development, uh, done in a piecemeal way where every building has their own detention pond, and it's just not a very efficient system. So instead, including that stormwater system as a regional amenity with regional detention ponds, things like that. Um, requiring in the code bicycle and pedestrian connections throughout the site, requiring coordination with the Rocky Mountain Ditch with the goal of retaining a trail alongside or near the ditch. Again, um, the ditch will ultimately decide what they want to do with the ditch, but the city will require that the developer coordinate. And if the ditch is not amenable, we still would like to see something just outside the ditch boundaries. And lastly, an analysis of existing trees and a good faith effort to preserve existing healthy, mature tree canopy. So again, all of these will be requirements and written into the code. And I'll turn it back over to Lauren.
Yeah, and maybe just to emphasize the 20% number, it's actually a pretty big number and kind of unprecedented requirement for us in our code. Um, this will require that a private property owner dedicates one-fifth of their private property to a public use. We have requirements for landscaping, so 10 to 15% in our mixed-use districts, but that's not for a public park or publicly accessible park. So, um, certainly raises the bar to sort of an unprecedented level. I think appropriately so, based on that being almost the number one, um, sort of public feedback we got in the master plan. Uh, 38th Avenue frontage. So we've had a lot of questions about sort of what will that look like? We're treating each edge of this property a little bit differently. So we're going to walk through those three edges. On 38th Avenue, um, currently the setback of the hospital to the street is about 80 to 100 feet, depending on where you measure it from. And the intent of the regulations for this frontage is really to maintain that existing relationship of the site to the street. It's got some breathing room, it's got some parking. Um, that existing sidewalk, detached sidewalk will be maintained. There's surface parking there, and that will continue to be allowed. Um, the master plan really desires to keep that condition. We won't, we won't build buildings up to the road the way you see on Wadsworth or 38th Avenue where we have a build to that actually requires the building to get closer to the street. In this case, it will be a setback and a minimum setback that is equal or greater than the building height. So if a building is 20 feet tall, it would be a 20-foot setback. If a building is 50 feet tall, it would be a 50-foot setback. In some conditions, buildings are tiered. That's what's meant to be shown by that image on the right. It's more legible in your packet. But, um, each portion of the building would need to be set back equivalent to its height. Um, this all presumes there would be new buildings there. We just want to make clear, we don't know yet if the hospital will remain in part or in whole. Um, but these would be the requirements if there would be a new building constructed in the proximity of the 38th Avenue frontage.
So in order to, uh, ensure the perimeter serves as a buffer and transition between the campus and existing adjacent residential neighborhoods, a low-density overlay is included around the perimeter of the site adjacent to all existing low-density neighborhoods. So west side, south side, and east side. Um, this would apply to the first row of development within the campus and will ensure compatibility of land uses and forms. So city code currently allows for a 35-foot height limit for residential, including across the street and along Allison Street. The proposed charter limit would actually limit this to two and a half stories or 30 feet, which will apply within this overlay in order to be more compatible with existing conditions. The allowed uses within the overlay would then be what is currently allowed in our low-density residential zone districts. So single unit homes and duplexes, uh, accessory buildings, civic buildings, and open space. And that's pretty much it. This ensures that medium-density uses such as townhomes do not immediately border existing neighborhoods. For buildings within the low-density overlay, there will be some design limitations that apply across the board to ensure compatibility. So for example, if structures are over two stories up to the two and a half story limit, then pitched roofs are required, making the third floor a partial floor, which is smaller than the floors below it. Flat roofs or shed roofs are only permitted for one and two-story homes. Some additional design requirements will also apply to prevent cookie cutter designs, including prohibiting adjacent residential structures from having identical designs, requiring variety in material and color, offsetting setbacks, eaves for pitched and shed roofs, and porches or other projecting features like entry awnings. And again, these will be required for all development within this yellow low-density overlay. And then next, I'll go over how this applies to each side of the property. So on Dudley Street, uh, which is the west low-density overlay, um, we are requiring Dudley Street to have on-street parking and a continuous detached sidewalk with street trees. Having a streetscape was really important and having ability for residents that will live on Dudley Street to park in the street will also be important. And that will help establish a buffer between the existing neighborhood on the west and the new development on the east. After that detached sidewalk and, uh, street tree area, there will be a front setback of 15 feet from the back of the new sidewalk. If you actually do the math, um, this setback will actually mean that homes are set back further from the edge of the street than they are in the west side. Uh, publicly accessible open space will be required at least 100 feet wide on Dudley Street and required to include a pedestrian and bike connection into the campus. Houses will have to have their front doors face Dudley Street or a publicly accessible open space. So you're not going to see backs of houses or, uh, back fences or anything like that. It'll really integrate with the neighborhood. No garage doors will be allowed to face Dudley Street. Uh, so these homes will have, uh, alley-loaded garages. Side setbacks a minimum of five feet, which means 10 feet between buildings. That's, uh, following the current requirements in our low-density and mixed-use zone districts. And also no street connections into the campus from Dudley Street. And that was something that was, uh, emphasized several times in the master plan. And then on the east and south sides, tried to circle all of those where this would apply to, this is a 30-foot setback for primary structures from a campus boundary. So that means regardless of where the actual internal property line is, this means that no building will be closer than 30 feet from the campus boundary. This ensures that a yard will always abut a yard. Um, in this area, rooftop and second-story decks will also be prohibited where new development directly abuts existing homes, and that will help preserve privacy for those existing residents. You don't have a deck hanging over someone's fence, for example. Um, and then similar setbacks to our existing low-density zone districts, 15-foot setbacks for tall accessory buildings and five-foot setbacks for small, like a shed, uh, accessory buildings. And again, no new street connections into these, um, residential street areas.
My good one. Um, we've been talking a lot about the edge of the property over the last couple of months. Um, we should give similar attention to the interior of the site. There's more flexibility, so, um, a little bit less specificity, I think, in our regulations. A lot of regulations that will look familiar to our other mixed-use districts. Just a reminder on this, um, image that has accompanied the charter language, the purple area is where, um, the maximum building height is proposed to be 70 feet or five stories. In the unshaded areas, the current charter limits would apply. So, um, we talked in July about sort of stepping down building height as you get towards the edge, and you can maybe picture that a little better. If, if the purple was the highest, the unshaded would be the next lower three or four stories, and then that yellow line is where it'd be the lowest height we talked about. And the interior of the site will really follow a lot of the architectural standards we have elsewhere in our architectural and site design manual and in our mixed-use codes. That means buildings have to have an entry facing the street, whether that's public or private. Um, slot homes, we made a slot home ordinance a number of years ago. Those are prohibited elsewhere. They'd be prohibited here. We have the same requirements for transparency and change in building materials. Um, regarding parking, we have a custom provision where parking lots would not be able to be placed between the building and the street, again, whether that's public or private, just a desire to screen parking so this feels as comfortable to a pedestrian as possible. Um, and then again, requiring bike and ped connections throughout. And so in our minds, what that means is sidewalks at least six feet wide on both sides of those two existing interior roads, Lutheran Parkway and Lutheran Parkway West.
And we've made a lot of progress on this, uh, since we last talked to council, um, but permitted uses. So the memo contains a simplified use chart of what will eventually appear in the zoning code. The list is really not meant to be overly prescriptive or exhaustive, but really provide for a range of uses throughout the campus. We're emphasizing the importance of building form, um, rather than emphasizing building use. So a wide range of uses will be allowed in the interior of the campus, which will align more or less with the suitability maps provided in the master plan. And like I said earlier, uses within the low-density overlay will be limited to single unit homes, duplexes, open space, and some civic and institutional uses, which are already permitted in other low-density zone districts. No apartments or townhomes will be allowed in the low-density overlay. And then the remainders of zones one and four, so the west and east sides, outside of the low-density overlay, but not covered by the charter amendment, will allow some additional uses, including some townhomes and, and other conditional uses. Uh, and then a mix of uses will be required in zones two and three, which is the center of the campus. And in this case, the mix of uses is required. Um, so it can't be exclusively residential. The developer actually will need to provide at least two different use groups as a primary use of the property. use of the property. And they can pick from the category of residential, public, civic, institutional, commercial services, and retail, and then hospitality, entertainment, and office. So again, zones two and three will require a mix of uses. We did land on prohibiting all auto-oriented uses throughout the development, so no drive-throughs, no gas stations, no auto repair, no, I guess those are the big three. And then some uses in the development will require conditional approvals to give staff in the city additional leverage and the public some additional protection, because the suitability maps from the master plan don't actually align perfectly with the zone, the sub-district boundaries. So for example, retail uses, you can see the heat map. They might be appropriate in some areas of Sub District Four, maybe at the northeast corner by 38th Avenue, but they're not appropriate elsewhere. And so by allowing them as a conditional use, that allows us the ability to regulate both location and design of those uses and review them on a case-by-case basis.
In terms of process, we'll follow the same structure that we've used for other mixed-use districts really successfully. So there's two primary documents that dictate what you can do and what it can look like. It's how a developer would communicate that to us. The first step is a concept plan. Concept plans are required for any property over 10 acres or any phase development, so would certainly apply in this case and is written to be submitted before any subsequent applications. The concept plan is what makes this a master planned project. It's a document that shows the entire site. It shows the circulation concepts, the land use concepts. We get a better sense of, is it going to be single unit or is it going to be a mix of single unit and duplex? Is it going to be townhomes along the Wishbone or is it going to be some other land use? Where is the retail proposed to go? So it'll be a good first preview for staff and decision-makers and the public of what a developer has in mind and how well it aligns with our master plan. The concept plan has always had a requirement for neighborhood meeting and a public comment period, so we'll incorporate that as well. And then we've added a few other specific requirements with the concept plan, including traffic studies, which sometimes come later, but we'll ask for that as early as we can. And then also for the concepts on the Blue House and the Chapel and the Tuberculous Stand to be expressed at that early phase. Concept plans get recorded with the county clerk and recorder, so they are binding and run with the land unless and until you go through that amendment process, public meeting, amended concept plan, and then re-recorded. The one thing that has been nice, these are all documents that would be submitted by a developer to the city. There is still no developer selected, so all the rules that you've seen tonight have been created sort of by our staff with our public input and without the influence of an outside purchaser. If that purchaser is made known before we get to sort of our next steps, we'd certainly seek their input. But we got that question a lot at our September public meetings, sort of how much influence has the development community had on these rulemakings? And they haven't yet, which is kind of a nice little bubble, protective bubble to be in for the time being. My last slide is next steps, and we've broken this into a few different phases. We've talked about these next steps a few times, but just as a reminder, so tonight we're seeking your consensus on the direction we're heading. Any questions you have, we'd be happy to answer. If there's anything sort of minutia or big topic that you think the Planning Commission could debate and resolve, they are scheduled to have a study session on this on November 7th. After tonight, what we'll do is translate what you've seen into a sort of our formal ordinance. That'd be the next forum that you would see that in. After Election Day, if the charter amendment passes, then there'd be a couple more steps. And I just want to speak to the language that was mentioned at the start of the meeting, because the language in the charter, some of it reads more legal easy, but it's actually a preview of what's to come. So the charter says, this, as in the charter amendment, shall not modify any current zoning on property and shall preserve existing height and density limitations in the Wheat Ridge Code of laws unless and until modified through future ordinances approved by city council after public hearings. So what that is intended to read, and I know it's a long sentence and it's a run-on, means that just because voters may approve the charter change, it doesn't mean that's automatically the next morning the rule that applies to that property. There's two series of ordinances and public hearings that have to happen first. So first, we'd have to adopt these zoning rules by ordinance into the municipal code through two public hearings at Planning Commission and City Council. The soonest those things, those could happen would be December, January. The next series is you have to apply those rules to the property. So again, they don't apply automatically just because voters may approve the charter. So the zone change also is approved by ordinance, by a series of public meetings or public hearings, and the soonest those could happen would be March or April. So that is a confusing sentence. It's actually the same sentence that appears in the sections already in our charter that are omitted from the webpage, but I just wanted to make that clear in relation to the next steps that would come after Election Day. That's all we have for tonight, and we're happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lauren. Staff did a really good job on this. I got a couple of questions, and then I'll have a couple of comments. For the, basically I'll call it open space, a publicly accessible space, can we somehow ban the fee and lieu? I mean, because usually there's kind of an out, and my concern is I just, if we want the 20%, we need to not have a, I mean legally, can we say like there's not door number two?
Yeah, it's a great question. So what you're referencing is our code provision in the subdivision regulations. It says anytime we get a new residential unit through development or subdivision, there's a parkland dedication requirement that is often fulfilled by a fee and lieu because we do not take parkland dedication in most cases. In this case, because it's a big enough property and likely would generate enough units, and we have this master plan, the 20% open space that is publicly accessible will count towards that parkland dedication requirement. It's very possible. The calculation, I think, is seven acres per 1,000 residents. It's very possible that they would need to dedicate more land than the 20%. So we could potentially get a fee and lieu in addition to the 20%, but the 20% would not get smaller than that number.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I assume the bulk plane standards apply for all the residential?
Do you want to speak to bulk plane standards?
Yes, I can. So our requirements are actually stricter than the city's current bulk plane requirements. So they apply, but they're actually stricter. The setbacks and everything that we've calculated, it's more substantial to allow for that additional buffer on all sides.
Okay, thank you. And then on the Dudley Street, I saw that the street will have trees on the east side with sidewalks. Is there any opportunity that we could reach out to residents on the west side there and say, hey, you know, we're thinking about putting trees in, would you want a tree on your side too?
Potentially. It'll be the developer that installs the trees. But we could probably try to come up with a way or program or some outlet to have sort of a mirror effect on both sides.
And then, thank you. And then is there going to be any mandate, vertical mixed use?
No.
And then, yeah, just two quick comments. I thought it was really thoughtful about the low-density east, west, south, to preserve privacy, not having the, you know, the upper decks, the second decks. I think that's a great idea, having the, you know, the parking lots can't be placed right next to the street. That's a great idea to, I think that'll really have a good character for that neighborhood. And then, you know, the concept plan of not going too far of like, let's really get it kind of hashed out first with the concept plan, having neighborhood meetings, I think that was a great idea. So really, thank you, staff. You did a great job on this.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just would like to call out that we did have seven comments online that were all positive towards this plan. So my first question is, so with the open space and the possibility of like playgrounds, would that open space then become part of our Parks and Rec Department, and it would be the city's responsibility? Or is that something that's going to be managed through some other local district in that area?
Yeah, I believe our intention is not to take on any additional property for the city to maintain, including roads even, but the parks and the roads would most likely be managed and owned by Metro Districts that would be established.
But would be available to any resident or?
Correct.
Any person that wanted to utilize that park space, it's available?
Yeah, it's very similar to a park that Mr. Larson and Ms. Dozeman were up at just last Saturday. We held a meeting, district meeting up there. There's a park in the Toll Brothers Development that is part of the Metro District, but it's open to the public.
Excellent, thanks. And then my next question is on the hospital. So if the hospital is kept and reused, and it's currently 91 feet, will it stay at that 91 feet as a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes.
And then my next and last question is, we're saying that they must utilize two types. So there's, you know, residential, retail, hospitality, and entertainment, civic uses. I know that there are some, I've had some concerns from some of the business owners on 38th Avenue about there being potentially too much entertainment and retail going into that site and potentially kind of cannibalizing what they've been working on on 38th Avenue. So could you speak to maybe how that's envisioned in the plan?
Yeah, that's a good comment. That came up during the master plan too. I think the economic, or not called that, the prosperity, Wheat Ridge Prosperity Plan, I think affirms that as well, that the site can't handle too much commercial square footage. I think Steve Art has said maybe 40,000 square feet max. One of the ways that we did, often that is achieved by the market. So people are not going to build and occupy space if there's not a market to support it in addition to our community's existing commercial spaces. What we've also done through the zoning is prohibit larger format retail uses to ensure that any of the market that could be absorbed as commercial uses on the site is the smaller scale, neighborhood-serving scale that we desire in this area.
And that leads into my follow-up question. In your table of uses, the simplified version in the memo, in Zone Four, so Zone Four has a small, so it has kind of a small leg that goes from 38th Avenue down into Zone Four. The majority of that has the low-density overlay in it. There is a kind of a sliver in there that has some potential, with it being on 38th Avenue, has some potential, and also in your, yep, right there. And also in your heat map of retail, it showed that little sliver. So when I was looking at the table, the only thing I was wondering about is, under commercial, small format retail is conditional. But then when you look under personal services, it says permitted, and I'm thinking that personal services being hair, nail salons, massage studios, things like that. I almost wonder if those are also kind of considered small format retail? And I just, at first glance, I was looking at it and I was like, okay, if I'm going to look at developing a site here, and I imagine a building like what's near our Starbucks on Kipling and 38th, the one that's been built there that is for lease now, I imagine something like that. But I would consider that small format retail, which is conditional. But then if I say, but I'm only going to have nail salons and like personal services in there, then it could be confusing. And so I just wonder if that's something that we might consider changing back to conditional.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think that should be conditional as well.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Lauren and Scott. This is a really good presentation. I thought, I was at Beans and Ballots and Beans a couple of weeks ago, and I thought one of the interesting questions came from somebody, I believe it was on Allison, Allison Court there. If you live on Allison Court, what's the height limit that you can have on your house?
35.
35.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's any current 35-foot houses on Allison, I would imagine, but they could potentially pop their top and go up to 35 feet, whereas, and with this setback here, they're going to be looking at, they'll be looking at backyards, right? So if I'm on Allison Court and I'm looking in towards Lutheran Campus, I'm looking at somebody's backyard, before then a 30-foot house. So they, I could potentially have a taller house than my neighbor if I live on Allison, and same with Dudley, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct, yes. And, you know, I lived on Allison when I was a kid, and, you know, I've walked Dudley several times. There's a lot of duplexes and single-family homes on both of those streets, right? So there's a mix of both, single-family, and so that kind of fits what's already there on the outside, certainly. And then you talk about, and I thought one of the things that was really interesting is, and I didn't see this before a couple of weeks ago, the setbacks being the same height as the building. So you're talking about if somebody wanted to build a very tall building near 38th Avenue, it would still have to be 70 feet back. So that's, that still protects that view from there. You know, I've had, and I had a couple of people reach out today that live in that area that are very supportive of this as well. I just wanted to, because somebody brought it up, and you brought it up again, Lauren, on the ballot question, there's no loophole to be able to apply this to another?
No, I think if our city attorney was here, he would emphatically emphasize that the charter can only be modified by a vote of Wheat Ridge voters.
Okay, so this isn't applicable to any other property other than this property?
Yeah, that's what I was going to note as well. The charter overrules the city code, so yeah, there's no way we could change you as a body without the vote of the people. Could change it somewhere else.
Okay. Again, I'm very supportive of this. I think that this is very well thought out. I think the people who have actually read it and have taken the time to ask some questions about it really do understand it. And I, again, as we get closer to the election, I hope, you know, we're kind of out talking as counselors and stuff, getting out and talking about this, because this really is a great opportunity for our city. Can you maybe talk, and I know that you haven't talked about it a whole lot, what happens if this, the height, doesn't pass with what we're looking at here?
Yeah, that's a good question. So if the height doesn't pass, then the timeline that I presented earlier is probably out the window. I think we'd have to regroup a little bit. A lot of, you know, the charter amendment was proposed by the master plan as an understanding that to achieve all of the things the community wants out of this site, it's sort of a give and get. So we have not sort of come up with a Plan B, but we would certainly have to regroup, figure out what the role the city wants to be in the absence of sort of the roadmap of the master plan, or at least that central piece of it. So the future is a little more predictable if it does pass and a little less predictable if it doesn't.
One more question, just to clarify for people listening at home, sorry. Does the height change the density of this campus?
No. The charter density cap of 21 units per acre is unchanged.
Okay, so it's just how it's spread out. It gives us more opportunities for civic space, parks, things like that.
Correct.
To be able to group this. Thank you. Understood.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we clarify those two points on the ballot page regarding the loophole and regarding the density question of 21?
Sure, we could put something on the website, I believe.
I just think that would be, since that has been called to the attention tonight, that we clarify that, no, this is not a loophole. And then I also wanted to, well, I have two questions. One along that line of, as far as the question regarding the possibility of there being civic options on the, I guess, whatever we're going to, the north side of the site, I think is what was referred to tonight, and the desire that several buildings be saved and things like that. And again, I know to the points that have been brought up, we've talked about this before, but what would enable the city to be able to make a move like that? Because there's a lot of, we'd have to buy property, we'd have to do a lot of those things. And so I just, I want people to try and understand how this does balance out and how, if we wanted to move our city offices, what kind of lift would that be? And what does that lift look like in context to what we're talking about?
Sure, I can take that question. You remember, we did a feasibility study of all of our city buildings and determined that we should look at other options for more space and different space. And we've also recently introduced a contract with the architect to help us look at the hospital building specifically, if it makes sense for us to move any, all or any of our If it makes sense for us to move any, all or any of our service civic uses over to that building. They'll also be looking at this building at the same time, see if this can be reused. So we are looking at that. Every developer that I know that was interested in the site over, over the last several months, most of them believe that that building being reused as some civic uses was, was the right thing, including utilizing the Blue House and the chapel with some type of civic purposes as well. And, you know, we won't need, we would never need that entire space for our city uses. So part of our contract with the architect is also to reach out to partner agencies in our community, other nonprofits such as libraries, cultural centers, you know, anything you could think of, theaters, whatever you may want to see in a civic campus, right? To see if they would like to partner and take some space as well.
But just to clarify, we have to buy that?
Yes, we would.
We don't get given that? That we don't own it? And just sort of what, what does it potentially look like?
I think there's, there's different options there. Yes, we could just come up at the table right away when, when a new developer is selected and say, we have the money, we want to buy this portion of the building. We cannot do that right now. Other option is to negotiate with the future developer in some type of financial agreement where we potentially lease space or we lease the own. There's different financing mechanisms we could look at. So there's a lot of options and that's what we're kind of investigating now.
But just to clarify, we don't get given that at any point?
I can't say 100% we couldn't, you know, depends on who the developer is and depends on what type of agreement we enter into with them. Because again, as another step, as you know, we're creating an urban renewal plan in area for the Lutheran Campus. And that honestly, to maybe address some of the questions earlier, that is where you would put some of the mandates that really don't belong in a zoning document. That's, if we're going to give money from urban renewal, property tax tip, that's where you have the leverage to tell the developer, you must preserve the Blue House. We're giving you money, this is what we get. Or, you know, you must give us the hospital for our city hall. You know, that might be a far stretch, but I don't want to say no because there's always very creative opportunities, working with the developer on, on that, on how to make those things work.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to sort of point out that there are several options that have to be considered and there is not sort of a, a magic sort of thing that is supposed to happen. My, my second quick question is to go back to how the, the district would manage, like snow plowing stuff, because the streets would still be public streets, correct?
They're currently private today.
So they, oh.
They always have been.
So does that mean that our snow plows stop at that?
Yeah, we don't, we don't plow, we don't maintain, plow, provide any service to those streets today. Never have. And that's, that's our hope, to keep them that way. We don't, Maria's shaking her head, yes, we don't, we don't have the capacity. You know, this development's not necessarily going to generate a lot of tax revenue for the city. And we don't want to have to bring on many more services. You know, if we took on those streets, we'd probably need another snow plow and more staffing and more.
Just a question.
More payment revenues in the, yeah, so.
No, I'm really supportive of this plan. I really appreciate everyone's work towards it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. Couple of just other small questions just to clarify. There are currently some offices still, that are still on the property and will continue to be so, be there. Is that correct?
There's some medical office buildings kind of up on the ridge that.
Zone Four?
There, yeah, they're in Zone Four. Want to point those out. There's Zone Three. Top of Zone Three.
Okay, okay.
And they're owned, they're not owned by Intermountain Health. So they have some contractual arrangements and agreements that have to be worked out with whoever, whoever the new owner is.
Got it. So there's a possibility that, or they're, they would move or they were, there's a possibility?
Possibility of both. There's a possibility they could stay or a possibility they could be bought out and moved. We don't know yet.
Got it, okay. That was one question. Just to clarify too, the parking on Dudley Street, that would be on the east side, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I heard that. I just want to clarify that. Thank you. And then finally, the Rocky Mountain Ditch, the possibility of having a trail, a multi-use trail along the ditch. I know that that can probably, that seems like it would be a challenging conversation and process to have. Hypothetically, would that just be within the Wishbone? Or would it continue out to, outside of Lutheran and, or both Lutherans, Parkway?
Yeah, the ditch goes all the way out to Wadsworth. We did look at that several years ago. I'd lose track of time. It could have been a decade ago. I don't know. And, you know, our ditches, Mr. Stites and I were talking about this, I think, the other day. I think his father or grandfather built a bridge over one of those, one of those ditches. And I think that has happened a lot over the history and a lot of our ditches, people use them. They use them for play, kids, and they built bridges. And recently, the Rocky Mountain Ditch did kind of stop that a little bit, at least on that portion that was extending out to Wadsworth. So we kind of approached them about it. I would like to hopefully see them work with us to extend it all the way to Wadsworth, especially when we build our new sidewalk on the west side of, between 32nd and 35th.
That's kind of where it's going.
I don't know if Lauren or Scott had it.
Yes, I agree. I mean, the biggest challenge with the ditch company is not so much can we have a trail, but how close can it be to the ditch? Do they want to enclose the ditch to protect sort of the water quality? So it's, it's more a question of where and how and what it looks like with the ditch company. Their easements are not super wide beyond the ditch because they don't like to maintain beyond the channel. But we will engage them, we engage them very lightly during the master planning effort. We'll engage them again now, just as a staff, to make sure they're aware of the planning efforts we've been doing and how great of an amenity we think that could be. And yeah, I think there's a lot of good opportunities here for connectivity.
They might say that it needs to be outside of their easement. And that's, that's okay. I think we'd still want to require a trail. There is a trail there now and they might say, well, if you're redeveloping, you got to move it. So I think there's still, but we want a trail for sure.
Right.
And it would be written in the code.
Great, cool. Thank you. Would it be possible to get a, like an electronic copy of that heat map? Like those, just those four pictures there? I love it. That's great. Helps me think about that. Those are all my questions. I think this is great. I certainly appreciate all the energy and thought and conversations that y'all are having about this. And I do support it and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I would also like to compliment staff on a most excellent effort here. This is a very comprehensive document and you think about all the things that could happen or should happen. And in one place or another, they appear to be addressed. I would agree with Mayor Protem Stites that if people are interested in, they should agree that it's accessible. And it's got a lot of very, very good stuff in it that helps explain a lot of things, a lot of questions that have come up. My questions, I have two of them. First one has to do with, and does have to do with retail. One of the things we saw when we met with our neighbors out there at Ward Station was, well, actually, they mirror both of these things. One has to do with retail and the total lack of retail out there and how just about everybody, there's so many people that have moved out there that work at home and they really would like to see someplace nearby where not just get a cup of coffee, but maybe just to go and hang out or shop or whatever they need to do. But retail is something that can make or break a neighborhood. And if we, if we don't, and I do like the dual recommendations in terms of usage for Zone Four, or I'm sorry, Zone Three. That seems like it will go a long way to sort of incentivizing and helping convince the developers that, that some sort of retail is very important to that neighborhood. So not in the form of a question, but my question does get, gets down to parking. And that was another issue that we saw out there at Ward Station. I am, well, all right, let's, let's ask the, just an open question then. Can you help describe how you will have the discussion or the discussion will evolve in terms of how much parking, where the parking will be? Will there be a lot of shared spaces that are, because I know there's a mention there about, instead of each, if there's retailers or if there's an office building, they don't get their own parking lot, which makes a whole lot of sense, but it also raises a whole bunch of other questions. And then for the residential areas, will there be, I don't know, guest parking or visitor parking areas? Because what we really want to avoid, and it is specified in there, at least the question is raised, that we want to try to avoid spillover parking into the, the surrounding neighborhood.
Yes, good question. So the, to start sort of at the highest level, so we will have minimum parking requirements, the same as we do in our other zone districts. There's a chance we'll have to come back and modify that citywide based on state law. But for the time being, we're going to continue ahead in the, in the way that we always have in Wheat Ridge.
And Lauren, what is that specifically?
The minimum parking requirements depends on the land use. So in a residential context, that's one space per unit as a minimum. And then we now actually have visitor parking requirements in residential context. We didn't have that when the train station area developed. It's different numbers for different land uses. What we're going to require for this site in particular is that there be a parking study or parking justification, so we can look at it more comprehensively. Parking is tricky, right? You don't want to ask for too little and have a spillover. You don't want to ask for too much and have empty parking lots. So the way that it's worked in the mixed use code is to have minimums and maximums in our other areas of the city, and that's, that's worked fairly well. I think because this campus is so big, you know, it's hard to imagine, but it's, it's the same size as Clear Creek Crossing, right? And so at Clear Creek Crossing, folks are not parking on the other side of I-70 to get into the campus. And I think from a market standpoint, what we typically see is that an apartment builder or homeowner or a commercial tenant space, they need to make sure they have a person who wants to buy that and a tenant who's happy. So they're also incentivized to ensure they have enough parking for the market. We've added provisions in there. You're exactly right to talk about shared parking because we don't want to have two, two commercial uses next to each other, one with full lot, one with an empty lot when they could be shared. So it doesn't preclude businesses or civic uses from having their own parking. It just, it sort of doubles down on our encouragement that they be shared. Parking is a challenge in every community and a sort of fear with every new development. So it's something we'll be looking at really closely in this case. Is there anything I'm forgetting on the parking rules that you've written?
The only thing I would add is we're not going to allow vehicular street connections except for the parkways into the development. So the thought of someone that's trying to visit someone in the middle of the campus, they're not going to be circling the neighborhood outside of it to look for parking. It's just, they're, they're not going to even be able to drive into it really. So I think that's kind of a natural barrier to some of that spillover because people won't be using the neighborhood, existing neighborhoods as a cut through essentially to get into the campus and try to find parking.
Yeah, it's a good point. The campus is a half mile north to south and a third of a mile east to west. So the idea that folks would park a half mile away and then walk is going to be challenging at this scale. So we'll be, we'll be looking at the parking comprehensively, which is a benefit. We couldn't do that in the train station area where we were looking earlier because each project came in individually. But I think at this scale, it allows us to be more economical and efficient and effective in managing parking.
Thank you. Councilor Hultein.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got my questions and math questions. So I hope everyone's got their calculators out. I'm just really excited by the 20% open space requirement. And I'm just wondering if we can figure out some sort of like relatable equivalency of how much space on that campus will actually be open space per this requirement? So is there like, can you translate that to like how many city blocks or like a existing park infrastructure, is there, or football fields? Is there some way of kind of creating an equivalency to give us a sense of how much open space that's going to generate?
Yes, if you give us a minute, probably. We haven't done.
I should have given you some warning, but you guys are always so good with the questions.
I think the biggest thing on that is it's based on the net area. So we're having to exclude the parkways and also exclude the potential for future new private streets as well. So that's, that's probably the biggest plus or minus either direction. But it's going to be a lot of open space.
A heck of a lot is your mathematical response. Because I mean, it's, it's what, like a 100-acre site? Is that correct?
It's 100 acres in total. I think maybe 70 acres is what's being sold because Intermountain Health will retain ownership of the hospice campus. And so kind of that whole southern little, and they're retaining the Foothills Medical Office Building. So if we went on the very low side and said 20% of 50 acres even, it'd be 10 acres of park land. Which is not insignificant for a community of our size.
That, that's really exciting. All right, that's good enough math. Y'all can put your calculator, I actually can't see you, but I assume everyone has their calculators out right now. I guess I just want to say, listening to this tonight and having been involved at every step along the way from, you know, being a citizen to being an elected official. I mean, what, what we're hearing tonight is really reflective of listening to what our communities told us. And I mean, there's a lot of, like, like even specific detail things to the overall concept of the site, the livability of the margins, the livability of the interior, how it connects. I, I just want to say, what I'm hearing tonight is that we're listening to people and that what our community has told us is really important, both for them and for our future neighbors, is showing up in this. So I just want to thank you for listening and for translating that into this proposed rezoning. When, when you first came to us and suggested that this was the approach to take on the campus, I, having not gone through it before, my knee-jerk reaction was, you know, no, we have so much leverage when we're negotiating with the developer. But a developer coming into a site like this wouldn't have this like depth of understanding and be able to articulate to this detail really what our community has said is important to them. So I just, I'm really glad that we've decided to take this approach. And I just really want to recognize staff for, you know, paying attention to, you know, the big picture and the small details in this. Because what I'm seeing is, is, you know, just really exactly what we've been hearing. So, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy, but this definitely translates what our community said is most important. So thank you for the, all the work on this and the work ahead.
I have updated math. Wheat Ridge High School football field is an acre and a half. So it'd be almost seven football fields and almost two Discovery Parks. Discovery Parks, maybe six-ish acres.
Wow, that's, that's really exciting. Thanks for doing the math, Lauren.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Thank you all, councilors. Everyone has had a chance to ask questions on this. I think it was a great presentation from both of you. Staff is asking for consensus to move this forward. Do we have consensus to move this forward? It appears that we do. Do we have any more discussion on this item before we move to the next item? All right, we'll give you our thank you very much for a great presentation and look forward to seeing your bounce back with this, with this issue.
We'll be back.
So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lauren. See my voice left still this evening?
Let's all wake up.
Because I'm going to put you back to sleep.
Because we're going to go back to sleep. Okay. We, we are pleased to move to agenda item number three. This is a, an update on the 20, 24 budget or the 2025 budget?
24.
24?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This will be relatively quick, but don't want to go through it too quickly. And we have plenty of time with, for questions at the end. Ally is here also to help with that. But we planned, we will talk about 25 a little bit. We plan to distribute to you all by this Friday, we hope, the proposed budget for 2025. So some of you will get electronic versions, some are getting hard books, I believe. Yep. Our plan is to review that with you all at study session on October 21st. Public hearing and resolution adopting the 25 budget is scheduled for November 25th. Hopefully we get it done and we'll celebrate Thanksgiving, right?
Hopefully, we get it done and we'll celebrate Thanksgiving, right? Because we're all going to be thankful. But tonight, we want to provide you an update on the this year's budget, 24 budget, through August 31st of this year. We hope this will set the foundation for you all before we start discussing next year's budget on the 21st. As we summarized in the staff memo that you had in your packet, we've been very busy over the last five years and longer, honestly. As we move into Wheat Ridge's next chapter, we have been investing in our next generation of residents, infrastructure and community. To accomplish this, though, we've had to increase our capacity in many different ways to be successful through increased staffing and other expenditures and other resources. Since 2019, we've added just over 38 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees. And our general fund expenditures have increased approximately 32% over that period since 2019. This is primarily due to inflation. As a big, big portion of it, believe it or not, inflation has grown since 2019 23%. I think everybody's feeling that. And so that was a big chunk of that increase in our budget. But we've also, over the period to address enhanced, also other things we've added to our budget to address enhanced community engagement, homeless issues, sustainability, improving service delivery, affordable housing, regulatory control with all of our different licensing programs, public safety, cybersecurity, and maintaining competitive wages and benefits. So as you know, City Council's reserve policy requires a minimum general fund reserve of 17%. And we try to target 25% if we can. With council support, we did adopt the 24 budget with a 17% projected reserve at the end of this year, which enabled us to invest more in the city, honestly. We are projecting that that unrestricted reserve is going to be probably 17.8% at the end of this year. So a little bit higher than we than we budgeted. Plus the Tabor mandated 3% restricted reserves that we have for emergencies on top of that 17.8. To get us to that 17.8, though, we had to, we cut about 1.9 million from this year's budget or some items we just didn't spend, but it totaled about 1.9 to keep us at that 17.8. So through August 31st, total general revenues are about 98% of prorated revenues. In other words, we are about 670,000 behind on what we expected to bring in at this time based on historic averages over the last five years. We believe the primary reason for this deficit is a reduction in building use tax and building permit revenues. Both of these revenue categories are only at about 60% of prorated revenues. However, the good news is all our other major revenue categories are coming in higher than expected. Sales taxes at about 102%, other taxes 103%, you know, governmental revenue 126%, services 116%, fines and forfeitures 123%, and other revenues at 193%. And we can talk about any specifics in there if you'd like. So comparing just a year to year, total general revenue is basically flat right now compared to 23. However, most revenue categories have increased with sales tax. Our largest revenue source is up about 6.2% through August 31st. So that's very good news. Both building use tax and building permits are the major revenue categories that are really dragging our general fund revenues down. Overall, construction activity on very large projects is slowing down. And a few projects which we expected to pull permits in 23 or 24 did not for various reasons. All of this, all of which accounted for significant decreases in use tax and building permit revenues. The good news is some of these projects are back on track. One of the examples is the Clear Creek Crossing lookout development. That's the restaurant portion taverns, outdoor dining area. We believe they should be pulling permits hopefully by the end of this year or first of next year. So we will see those revenues at some point. So we're going to be really focusing more intently in the future to ensure that these one-time spikes in revenues that we've been seeing over the last five or seven years from these large development projects, we're going to make sure that those revenues are not considered as part of our long-term operating expenses when we budget for the next year out. We're going to be proposing to transfer one-time revenues to either our CIP budget or our equipment replacement funds for future one-time expenditures such as vehicles or other expenses such as that. So in conclusion, with total general fund revenues flat, excuse me, we'll be taking a more conservative approach with the 25 budget to ensure we can maintain at least a 17% reserve with the intention of building back reserves back to 25%. We're also evaluating our fee structure and we'll be making recommendations to City Council for increased fees in certain areas, such as we discussed this evening with contractors licenses. The court is also looking at increasing their fees fees and for fines. Few other areas, every department's looking at our fee structures. We're also taking a hard look at employee vacancies as they arise to determine if those positions need to be refilled or if those services can be provided differently. Finally, our hope for the next year or two is to focus on the immense amount of projects currently in the pipeline and planning for implementations, implementation of the recommendations that we're going to receive from all of our different planning efforts. So we hope as we presented this morning to presented this morning to Ally staff puts the word today. We're going to chill out. We're calming down. We're calming down for a year. We think we're calming down. It seems like it just gets busier. But we have so much in the pipeline right now. We really do need to focus on what's in the pipeline, take advantage of the time, take a step back, make sure that we get our reserves back up to an appropriate level and get some work done. So that was very quick, but here for any questions. I think, you know, the overall news is that it's it's our budget's good. As we mentioned, I mentioned it to mention to you all in the email I think I sent last week, we received a double A minus rating on our from S and P. So that is very, very, very good. Anything in the A category is a very good, excellent rating, actually. So our financial situation is good. I think it's just prudent to be maybe a little bit more conservative in the 25 budget, which we will talk about more in in a few weeks. But happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so that's a teaser, Councilor.
Yes.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At my house, we call that pump your brakes.
Pump the brakes.
You better pump your brakes. Okay, so my question is about moving the one-time revenues and expenditures into the CIP budget. Does that mean that once it's in the CIP budget, it means that it those one-time revenues and expenditures will not be part of our 17% reserve, right? So, okay, so that makes a lot of sense to me because those are those are guesses, right? This is a guess we're going to get this one-time revenue. And like you were saying, the uses, like the building use permit fees didn't come in because there's been some feet dragging happening with, you know, some certain areas in town. And so so then my question is, on the expenditures part of that, though, like, so we can kind of guess on the revenues. On the expenditures part, though, we have a more solid idea about what those would be, right? So how then would that play in the CIP budget when you have a guesstimate of revenues, but you have a knowledge of expenditures necessary?
Yeah, so I think some years you're able to do more than some years than you are.
So then wouldn't it be like a schedule? You would have like a schedule of like what you would like. So if we, here's our guesstimate, if we bring in this much revenue, then we're on like Schedule A and we'll be able to replace these vehicles, replace that. Or we'll be on a Schedule B because it's less. That's what I was wondering.
I mean, I think I can just add a little bit to that. There's there are things, actually things, right? Not people, not programs, that really are one-time expenditures that are a better fit for those one-time revenues. So for example, one of the things, this isn't the best example because we still have to build replacements. But one of the things our police department has been advocating for is that we move to a GTAC, an MDT, the laptops that are in police cars. Right now, there's one per car. The the best scenario would be actually to move to one per officer. That's about $80,000 one-time expense. And in that case, there's about probably 25,000 recurring expense when they're due for replacement. We replace a few of those every year, right? But that might be a good example of us taking revenues that we we know are one-time, diverting them to, say, the equipment replacement fund and saving. That's kind of what we did with the ERP, right? We took money and we saved it for a future year. We don't want to get used to one-time revenues to support our operation. Our operation should be able to sustain itself on typical annual revenues.
I think another example, too, maybe the CIP budget is is our preventative maintenance program. We have, over the years, had very limited dollars for annual preventative maintenance or asphalt, crack seal, thoroughly seal. It's going to change a little bit with our two J bonds. But I think if we can, when we get large infusions of one-time revenues, we could put it in CIP budget. Maria determines, you know, what streets are critically need replaced or or maintains. She could do more in one year than another year if there's more money available that year.
And rely less on a transfer from the general fund, yeah.
So I guess then my next point is that, because in the past, sometimes we so we we passed, you know, 2024 to 17%, right? We we were like, let's spend taxpayer dollars on taxpayers, right? Let's spend that money down. It's going to be harder without those one-time revenues to have a higher reserve, right? Because currently, the way that we historically, they've been a part of of what we are calling our reserve. So it's going to be maybe a little bit harder to hit that reserve at like a 25%. So are we looking at hopefully targeting more like a 18 or 19?
So that there's more one-time, more revenues to transfer?
No, no, no. So we're moving those out of our budget. So it makes it really hard to be like, oh, we have this really big one-time revenue that's coming in. So we can be at 25% reserve.
Well, you could, yeah, it depends what council. I think Ally and I keep looking at our reserve policy. It's something I think we'd like to bring back to council to have another discussion about and to determine what the right number is. Again, the numbers that we have in our current policy are based on a national standard. It may not be, it may not fit today and may not fit for our organization. You know, I think when we dropped our our reserve to 17% for the 2024 budget, Ally and I were like every month, it's like, oh, my God, we're we're dipping down to 15%. What do we need? You know, I think it was not, there wasn't enough cushion there that it kind of drove us crazy. We couldn't sleep at night. What are we going to do? And so it kind of bugged us a little bit. And I think a little bit more cushion there would be better. I don't know what that right number is, but, you know, you could use some of your one-time revenues to to get your fund balance maybe up to a certain level. You know, keep some in the general fund, move some to CIP so that you could keep that reserve at an appropriate level.
Great, thank you. I think it's fiscal responsible to make that change. Thanks for coming up with that.
Thank you, Councilor Weber.
Thanks, I fully support this change. I think it's a really smart way to to manage and look forward to continuing the good things. And I just want to say how amazing, I mean, the last five years have just been incredible in Wheat Ridge. And we have gotten so, I feel like so much value for the money that we've actually spent on things. So thank you all for managing it so well. And I just, I just feel really lucky. So thanks. And thanks for thinking about this because I think this is a really smart way to deal with our our one-time infusions. And just so so I understand for people who are listening, because I know they're listening to budget conversations and people always do, they tune in. This means that if we we get a funding source like a grant or something like that that is a one-time thing, it goes into basically our one-time budget that pays for one-time things, not our continual budget that is the all-the-time budget of paying for the toilets flushing and the and all the things. I think that's brilliant.
Correct.
So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I had just a little question. When you talk about the last five years, been an interesting chapter in our lives. But we had a lot of sort of one-time money from other sources, ARPA funds and and other things from the government. And I think those typically are supposed to be spent out, maybe allocated by now and spent out by '26 or something like that. And are we sort of on target to to make all those expenditures?
We are, yeah, we are actually. And as far as the the way we reported this to the federal government, and we talked about this in the upper conversations, is that we actually offset public safety payroll, which was an allowable expense of all of it in those first two years. And then it was really at your discretion to allocate the rest. But yeah, we are on track. We are recommending a couple of changes to your original direction. We'll talk about that in the budget in order to to get to that 17%. So we've we've sort of done some things to get to that 17% next year to be to be, you know, in conservatively projecting our revenues. And we'll talk about that in that budget conversation.
All right. Any other, any other discussion on the budget? Oh, Councilor Larson.
Mayor, if I just, there's there's so much here, and this is my first go-through on this. And I'm sure I'm going to have a lot more specific questions. But I do appreciate the attempt, the effort to simplify this, to make it this one, one-time funding source versus going to one-time things like buying cars and a police car you could buy this year, you could buy it next year or might, you know, that that kind of thing. And that certainly makes sense. I guess where some of the questions I have are on some of the other, I don't want to call them discretionary, but some of the other things that the city does that that have kind of landed as more or less permanent things and the budgets, programs first come in, first approved, and then it sort of takes on a life of its own. And whether, when we go through the specifics, there's some of the line item stuff, we'll have an opportunity to discuss some of these things that if they ended tomorrow, this city would keep going.
Yeah, that's a good discussion that council should be having on what your priorities are. We've, as the memo outlined, we've added a lot of things. It doesn't address everything that we've probably added or what's in the budget. Maybe you have a different idea of maybe programs and services we're providing that you'd like to talk about. But that's what the whole budget process is for. It's all about priorities.
Always believed that when you look at a budget, you kind of look at what the city thinks of itself and where it wants to go.
Yep.
All right, any additional discussion on this? Doesn't require any action by us because we're going to.
Just something.
Get another chance to do more budgeting.
Very soon.
So. Okay, I don't, I, Councilor Hulteen hasn't raised her hand, so I don't see a question there. And she's still with us. So anyway, that unless we have further discussion on this item, we will conclude with item number three. And that kind of wraps our our study items on the agenda. But we can always go to staff reports with Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. You remember, we all decided, so you all decided to create a council legislative committee. And we would like to start preparing for the 25 legislative session. Believe it or not, it's going to be here in a couple of months. And right now, we have Councilmember Larson, who's expressed interest. And then, of course, Mayor Starker, who is on the CML Policy Committee, would be an automatic committee person. I think we're hoping to have one more council member who would be part of this committee. So looking for interest, if you don't want to do it tonight, if you could send us an email. We would, I think we're ready to schedule a meeting to start talking about creating a city legislative policy. Otherwise, we'll draw a name out of a hat and let you know tomorrow. A dartboard? All right, I'm pretty good at darts. Yeah, you're, Rachel does? Okay, Rachel's it. Thank you very much. You volunteering? Great, all right, done there. And just to confirm, I can't remember if I sent an email to confirm with you or not, but we are confirmed for our City Council and Mayor Retreat for January 31st, February 1st. We generally meet on Friday, about 4:30-ish, 5 to 8:30-ish. And then Saturday, 8:30-ish to 4-ish. And we will get more information out to you with the logistics on that soon.
And would you say both of those are all based, all day?
The Friday is the afternoon. The Friday is the afternoon, starting 4:35-ish to about 8, 8:30. We have dinner, and then Saturday, kind of all day, 8:30 to 3 to 4. Yep. And it all, usually, for the new council members, we usually just do it in town. Friday night, we usually go to a restaurant, have dinner, staff comes and provides updates, and then Saturday, we find a place in town also as well to, it's not a junket to Hawaii or anything. Sorry.
Well, we haven't approved the budget yet. So, let's not, let's not abandon all hope. Okay, we will now go to elected officials' reports. Have something, Mayor Protem Stites.
Allie, when you did your meeting this morning, did you like play Taylor Swift, You Need to Calm Down or anything like that?
Yeah.
You should, maybe next time. I just wanted to, I was able to cut the ribbon over at, yeah, right? Yes, yeah. I was able to cut the ribbon last week at Scott's Automotive at 45th and Garrison. Councilor Larson was there, a really great group of people. I have a front tire that's got a little bit of a hole in it, so I think I'm going to go back there, but really, really cool group of people there. Got to meet the mayor of Wellington, who works for the company, so that was really cool. And then joined Mary Ann and most of the staff and Paige for Wheat Ridge 101 last Wednesday night, and that was really cool. There's a great group of people, I think there's like 26 or something like that, ranging from people who've lived here since the 70s all the way to most of the people who've lived here less than a year. So really great group of people to get involved in the city. So thank you to Mary Ann and to local works and Paige, for everybody who's putting that on. So looking forward to, oh, and coffee with the mayor this Saturday. I'm going to be filling in for the mayor, so don't take that as a note not to come. You should come, and we will be talking. So thank you.
Bring the tough questions on. Councilor Olm.
Thank you, Mayor. What was it, about a couple of weeks ago, I got to participate in the National Public Lands Day, and usually I'm out there picking up the garbage with my wife and other fellow volunteers, but this year I was really lucky that my wife and I, along with other volunteers and staff, we actually, as you drive into the, you know, the, on the median there, we planted the perennials and the plants in the median. And so that was, Patrick will have a little bit better view, looking out that way. But, but I hope everybody enjoys that. I think that was a great thing that the city did and the staff of, there used to be two little strips of non-functional turf next to the curb, and, you know, people are really proud of getting those plants in, and I think it's going to look really nice. And then I also, for those of you who haven't walked over to the, there's some Bermuda grass that usually grows in like California and, you know, southern areas, but there's some Bermuda grass over, just on the west side there. And if you ever get a little stressed out, I would advise you to take a little walk on that Bermuda grass, because it feels like you're stepping on pillows. It's just on the, on the west side of the sidewalks. It's, it's interesting. So just take, take me up on that. Thank you.
Okay. Additional elected officials' reports, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And a couple of things here. First off, I did have the opportunity to join council member Dozeman out, and this was two Saturdays ago, at the Ward Station community, where we pitched a tent and we invited all the neighbors to come on out, and we had more than 30 people come by and say hello and, and talk about some of the things that are going on out there. There were a few specifics that came out of that. One was, they did talk about parking. They all recognized that, that community is pretty unique. And there was also discussion about traffic engineering, because we had a traffic engineer who was a resident out there, and he told us all the things that need to be done with those intersections out there, so I took notes. There, and there also discussion about the lack of continuous sidewalks along Ward Road and Ridge, and Patrick was good enough to send me some of the projects that are in the works for that area, and that, that's encouraging. The, in general, though, they, and a lot of the people that live out there work at home. And I got the sense, and they said it in as many words, that they feel that community is safe and it's quiet, and it is, it's a very, very good place to live. They all feel that they made the right decision by, by moving out there. Most of the people there are from Colorado, elsewhere in Colorado, a few people from out of state, but, but it has the, the real potential to turn into a good, solid community and certainly a good addition to the city of Wheat Ridge. And then there was, you know, I asked them, well, where do you, when you go grocery shopping, where do you shop? And they say, well, unfortunately, we have to go up to Arvada because it's difficult to make a left turn out of, out of that neighborhood. But they, they were generally supportive of the, the multi-story residential building that will be, in the planning stages for out there. And they, they saw that as a possible strong addition to the community. And then they did comment that there, it would be nice to see some sort of a retail, whether coffee shop or maybe a little grocery store or something like that out there, but something that would not only provide them with a break from working at home, but also more of a, maybe a community gathering spot and a place to commune with your neighbors, that kind of thing. But overall, they were very positive about their, their experiences out there, and again, they, they all felt like they made the right decision by moving out there, and they were very happy to be citizens of Wheat Ridge. They, I, I've mentioned this before, I'll mention it again, when I walk the dog every day, I see more, you know, just evidence of people not caring and just opening the window and tossing garbage out and tossing trash on the street. That's not acceptable for Wheat Ridge. We can do better. And then finally, October is, among other things, it is National Polish-American Month, and I would encourage everybody to go out and patronize any of the Polish delis that are around, because I'm certainly planning on picking up some pierogies and kielbassas very soon.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen, I had your name come up on a note. Have you?
Yes. Yeah, I had my hand raised. So I'm actually on the East Coast this week, that's why I'm joining you virtually, and I was taking a train from Washington to Philadelphia yesterday, where Philadelphia was celebrating its Polish heritage and had a big parade, so got to see that. But I was on the train, and I looked over, and there was a young man wearing a CU sweatshirt. So I was like, oh, do you, do you go to CU? And he's like, no, my mom did. He's like, I'm actually getting my PhD at University of Pennsylvania in the classics. And I talked to him for a little bit, and I was like, oh, well, I went to CU. And he's like, oh, well, I grew up in the Denver area. And I was like, oh, where'd you grow up? He's like, oh, I grew up in Wheat Ridge. And I was like, you did? And he, when we made the connection that I was also from Wheat Ridge, he was just glowingly proud of having gone to Wheat Ridge High School. He's like, I'm a farmer, still a farmer. And his parents had actually rented their house out for a few years while they were on a mission, and they just moved back into the house last month, and he's so excited to come home to Wheat Ridge for Christmas this year. And it was just, again, you just run into Wheat Ridge people wherever you go, and it was just such a fun little small world story. And, but just the look on his face with the, you know, the pride he had in the community and the pride he had being a Wheat Ridge farmer was just really, just really special. And that's, that's my story. I'm not in the town today or this week, but it found me here on the East Coast and just reminded me Wheat Ridge is a great place to call home.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us, and safe travels. I had the pleasure to join the Paramount Park Sustainable Neighborhoods Group last Friday afternoon to do ribbon cutting for their sustainable garden that they've, they've put in. They've got a, an area out there, it's probably a 20 or 25-foot diameter circle that they've been working on for, for a good deal, part of the year, and they've got some great plants going on there, and a lot of great, great community over there that are, that are really working on sustainability. So I want to thank them for inviting me, and it was really a pleasure to be there. So a lot of great things going on in our town. So we will be here, let's, let's check this next week. We are back in a regular, regular session, and a special study session? Does that sound right? Okay, haven't seen the, the full agenda, but look forward to seeing everybody at that time. Is there any, any more business to come before our study session tonight? In hearing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.